Mr. Brown. Mr. George is excused. Mrs. LaBelle.
Here.
Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Merrick.
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Mayor Thomas Lee, Assistant City Attorney Bill Vinsco, Deputy Administrator Hannah Tool, Municipal Affairs Manager Hannah O'Brook, Assistant City Clerk Katherine Pang, and Administrative Assistant Mrs. Sandra Holcak. There are four announcements. Good evening. First of all, Councilman Brown proposed a new resolution after last regular session two weeks ago, which was voted on and adopted by council at that meeting. Councilman Brown would like to reiterate that resolution tonight. I'll have to talk to Councilman Brown as soon as I take the other announcements. Announcement number two is the University of Scranton resolution you have on top of your packets, council has on top of the packets, is the final document. Basically, the only change from the office of the original resolution that were in your packets is on page two, section G, the reference to public hearing on the project that occurred on June 2nd, 2015. That reference is in there to that public, the original public we had in hell, so that's why it wasn't in there initially. The third announcement is file of council number 11 of 2015, the ordinance remaining Charles Street Park is untied, untied voting, is being pulled from the agenda. Attorney Vinsco will explain.
This resolution is going to be done by ordinance, and the issue of the ordinance is that while there has been no naming issued with Charles Street Park, we are reviewing the title going back to its inception, to make sure that there's no deed restrictions to what is named Park. The example I use is Hollenback Park, which has an exemption that says that if it's not the Hollenback name, or if it is ever not used as a park, it goes back to the Hollenback family. So we want to make sure that in the origin, in the document, there's nothing in there to lock the park.
And finally, since we only have one microphone, council, if you wish to comment, please raise your hand to get chairman's attention and receive the microphone. Please speak directly and clearly into it for the record, Mr. Mayor Alson. And the audience, those who have registered to speak, will be taken to sequence during the public discussion portion of the meeting. All will have five minutes to make their presentation. When it's your turn, also speak directly and clearly for the record, please. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on legislation pending before council tonight?
Mary Jane.
You're welcome.
Hi. My name is Mary Jane Schenkum. I'm here on behalf of the traffic light at exit two with the cross valley and the one transparises. I understand that we're voting on that too early, however, Pendott informed me in September of 2014 that they already have done a traffic study there, and I haven't heard any results from that.
Okay. I can speak loudly on that. I don't want this microphone blowing you up today, but they have done a previous traffic study. However, in my opinion, and obviously your problems still exist there. I know that there happened accidents there. I've witnessed accidents. I haven't actually seen them happen, but I've seen them afterwards, and I frequently go through that intersection. So what we're asking to do formally, on behalf of the city of Wilkes-Barre, through resolutions, is to ask them to relook at this whole situation again, relook at the traffic study, and also relook at the physical layout of the intersection. Sometimes traffic studies, the number of crashes don't really give you a clarification. We're telling them that there is a problem there, we're asking them to take another look at it, and to see if in fact there's something that can be done to remedy that situation. I agree with you. I agree that traffic light is indeed there. We've talked about this for many years. We know that there have been traffic crashes there. We also know that it is very difficult to turn left across multiple lanes of traffic sometimes moving at a fairly good speed. So this is our formal request, the Department of Transportation revisit this, to relook at their traffic studies, and relook at their engineering to the intersection. So we will see where that goes in the light though.
Okay. We said we'll see where that goes. However, it seems like Pendott and the Wilkes Barre are playing, I don't know, some kind of a game back and forth, because I've been hearing this for two years now. I'm just wondering if there's anything more.
Well, I know things are changing, because when I took office in my first term, about the second year, I had a lot of people come to me to try to get that, to get a light there. And back then, we were pulled by Pendott, and in proximity, it's too close to the exit light on the other side of the cross valley, which is Bear Creek. So that has changed, and things are always changing with Pendott. Hopefully, this time they'll do a study, and it's better than not trying.
Okay, so what you're saying is up to Pendott to pick a traffic light there, not Wilkes Barre?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Pendott's telling me that Wilkes Barre is responsible for it?
No, it's a state road.
Okay. And do we have a contact person at Pendott that we could talk to about this?
Sure, which does. If you want to give me your number after the meeting, I'll get the name and phone number for you.
Okay, I'll have to leave shortly.
Yeah, that's okay. Okay, she'll get, just give the police, and then she'll be able to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, any other comments on pending litigation for that? John?
John Sahaski, Almaly. About the University of Scranton, what, like, after the first one, what did, how much did we benefit? Like, as we're talking about the debate for the S U B, that's not all that we got, right? Like, from that deal? Basically, my question is, how is the city going to benefit from helping the University of Scranton on this deal?
It's just a fragment, it's just about the lights. Four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and fifty a year for the light.
For, and that lasts how long?
How long does the, the, unless they refinance again?
Thirty years?
I don't know.
I'm not sure, it was a twenty-three-year note.
But we're, we're going to loan them how much?
No. No, not giving them any money.
Bond?
Nothing, not a thing. We are a pass-through entity.
It's their bond.
Okay. So, yeah, I think, well, they kind of understood it, but I didn't understand every outcome Tuesday. Like, so we're not, basically, we're not going to risk anything.
There is nothing at risk. The only concern that was brought up by Councilman George the other night was, will this prohibit somebody from a nonprofit Englishberry from Mount Daniel Long? And right now, there's nobody standing in line, okay? So that's not affecting anybody. If that comes January 1st, we'll be able to do it, if there's a nonprofit Englishberry qualified for, you know, the bank quality no. But this is come to us from the finance authority, they did different delegates, and they're recommending us to do this, so.
John, there's no liability on this thing at all.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's the biggest thing I want to know.
And in the past, it's gotten resources to act for purchases, proceeds, so it's nothing out of your obligation.
Yeah, everybody was saying, it seemed like that, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to be sure about that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else pending legislation this evening?
We're going to add another, another item to the agenda this evening. It's a new resolution. In the last four hours, City of Wilkes-Barre was successful, subject to council approval, in negotiating a settlement with New Creek. For those of you who not know what this is about, in 2002 and 2003, the administration of the city of Wilkes-Barre entered into a contract for a large amount of concrete, and they sued the redevelopment authority in 2006, and they got a judgment in the amount of $4.5 million against the redevelopment authority, which is why the city could not use the redevelopment authority for the last 12 years. Tomorrow, at 10:30, the city of Wilkes-Barre is foreclosing all redevelopment authority properties, and to take control of it, the only impediment was this New Creek judgment. We have, the New Creek judgment is now at $6.433 million against the redevelopment authority. We have successfully negotiated a full, complete settlement, which will allow the city and the administration to reconstitute the redevelopment authority for projects in neighborhoods and also downtown, and it will also allow them, the judgments to be removed for a total cost of $200,000. The resolution that's being presented tonight will allow the city to pay $200,000 in full satisfaction of a $6.4 million obligation. And in exchange, the city will obtain all of the major parcels of the redevelopment authority. This includes the Bell Furniture Lot, the Fell Lot, large properties of land in and around the Amber Site in Wilkes-Barre. And so I circulated the resolution that sets forth these terms. We have an executive session because of the fall's pending litigation being prior to this, and the only issue will be council authorization. The payment of the $200,000 will be within 30 days, and tomorrow, the city will then take the properties of the redevelopment authority, and then the redevelopment authority remaining slivers, those that are behind houses or something, will be able to be sold or transferred after any type of encumbrances going forward. This has been a negotiation for seven years, but we'll be able to accomplish it tonight within one hour of obtaining a hotel sterling. So we're asking for council's consideration of that this evening.
Thank you. I felt it was necessary to ask city council's approval to pass the following resolution. I've been asked over the last several months about some issues regarding our park. One of the issues was that there were some rumors out there that the EMS operators would be privatized. So what I did was I presented the following resolution, and I'm happy to say council approved it. So let me read that if you would. It resolved by the city council of the city of Wilkes-Barre that the city council of Wilkes-Barre in recognition of the exemplary service, professionalism, and efficiency of the Wilkes-Barre Fire Department EMS service hereby extend its complete support of said service and oppose any attempt at or consideration of privatizing. Additionally, council greatly acknowledges and highly commends and offers sincere thanks for the vital services it performs 24/7 for all citizens of our community. I wanted to make it clear that city council supports not privatizing EMS service. One of the reasons I know how good these people are is I've actually experienced the service they provide, and I can't tell you how highly trained these people are and what a wonderful job they do. So I wanted to make it formal, and those that went on at the council meeting when this was put together, I want to offer that opportunity to hear the resolution.
Just for the record, as we're sitting here, with regard to the Hugh Enterprise of New Creek litigation, I did receive an email with signatures of Hugh Enterprise, so they have signed this and agreed to it, subject to council's approval, so will be reviewed on consideration for passes.
George, thank you for that resolution, and also thank you for putting this together to try to get closer to the community and get some more people at the meetings. Thanks for working. School board, school board, I want to thank the members of the school board, because they're paying people overtime so we can do this. Thank you very much.
What we're doing, folks, just so you understand, we're trying to, during the spring and summer months, is have the city council meeting in your neighborhoods, rather than making you come to city council, we're going to come to you. So this is the first part of that. Naturally, there's logistics that have to be worked out, whatever you may change, but I thank Mr. Ryan and Kathy and everyone else that worked hard to put this together. If it doesn't work, and next year's council will be going over whether to do this again or not, and if it doesn't work, at least we can say we tried to come out to the people's neighborhoods. They are going to be at different locations. What we have set up so far, that I can recall, we have the Toyota Concess of Coal Street for Mr. Barry's district, Obi-Holy One at Inferwood, United Baptist Church for my district and District Gay, and Mrs. LaBelle's district, who will have the G and R High School. We still have to set up one for Mr. George's district, but hopefully, if we will see a sense of greater value, we'll find out after three to four days.
Thanks again, George. Okay, any more comments on pending litigation tonight? Okay. We'll get into the formal voting, the items on the agenda. First, and secondly, will be the resolution relative to the University of Scranton refunding through the finance court. Motion second to vote. Second is Lori LaBelle. Mr. George Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Mr. Merrick.
Yes.
Motion passes. Second is the consent agenda resolutions. Motion second to vote.
Bill and George.
Bill and George. Mr. George Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Motion passes also. And last is the new resolution proposed by Mr. Vinsco, which he just explained in detail to everyone. Motion second to vote.
George.
Mr. George Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Mr. Merrick.
Yes.
Motion passes also. And last is the new resolution proposed by Mr. Vinsco, which he just explained in detail to everyone. Motion second to vote. Mr. George Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
And Mr. Merrick.
Yes.
Motion passes also. And last is the new resolution proposed by Mr. Vinsco, which he just explained in detail to everyone. Motion second to vote. Mr. George Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
And Mr. Merrick.
Yes.
Motion passes also. And last is the new resolution proposed by Mr. Vinsco, which he just explained in detail to everyone. Motion second to vote. Mr. George Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
And Mr. Merrick.
Yes.
Motion passes also. And last is the new resolution proposed by Mr. Vinsco, which he just explained in detail to everyone. Motion second to vote. Mr. George Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. LaBelle.
Yes.
Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Barrett.
Yes.
And Mr. Merrick.
Yes.
Motion passes also. I think the formal voting portion of the meeting. Okay, comments by council? Mrs. LaBelle, do you have anything?
No, I had two, one issue, and Andy didn't take care of it.
Okay, great. Mr. Brown, any comments tonight?
Yeah, I just would like to make, just like to make a request. It's been quite a while since we've heard from the management at Sherman Hills. I'd like to ask if we could invite you to our next meeting, get an update on what they've done as far as security measures, and we haven't talked about it for a while. I know I haven't talked to him. So if we could, Mr. Mayor, if we could reach out to them and ask, maybe attend our next session, and give us an update on the security measures that they follow through.
Mr. Barrett? Just a couple things. First of all, congratulations to the city administration, mayor, and staff, Attorney Vinsco, on the accomplishment today with the Wilkes-Barre property. Certainly, a good day for the city in that respect, and all the hard work that went into it. Our congratulations to that. Look forward to seeing something happen there, so I'm sure we'll, thank you. And a couple days ago, about two days ago, you might have seen this in the newspaper, there was a traffic stop on Scott Street, the area of Royal Street, where the shooting event took place over the last few weeks. About 2:00 in the morning, one of our patrol officers made a traffic stop, and took a person into custody with stolen weapons in the vehicle, wanted person involved in previous shooting in Sherman Hills. This is a 2:00 AM traffic stop. This is the type of, speaking from our experience, and I'm sure Officer Marshall's experience, that this is the type of aggressive patrol activities that are going to make a very strong statement, and going to make a tremendous step towards resolving issues that we have seen there. So I just want to thank the police department, the officers, and of course, the city administration for their support in putting these patrol in these areas, and where these officers are taking these measures to make these stops, and hopefully, we will continue to do that. And, but it was very reassuring to read. And third, I did get a call just before I came here this evening, again, from another resident of Pine Ridge. I know that you have been trying to reach out and resolve this, but he also complained about the conditions there, the overgrowth, and the lack of response from the developer. So I'm just asking if we could set up a meeting with him, to have him come in and see what the future holds for development. We've been in contact with him. Recently? He's not recent. With the health department. As of this afternoon, I was told that we weren't. Okay, super. I would like to sit down, very sorry, I would still like to sit down with him, and maybe yourself, and anyone else that might be involved, to see what we're going with this. Okay, thank you. Just to add to the stop on Scott Street, that was one of our most recent hires. Yes, I understand. And, you know, that got a lot of attention because of the guy who passed, but our squad, our crew is going to do a great job, controlling it, was making a lot of us make arrests. When we have aggressive patrol unit out there, it goes a long way towards urban type of, thank you. Okay, Andrew, I just got, I'm working with Poochian on a few issues, but I do have to add to your list. Number one is 17 Hume Street. I want us, I want us to see if we can put that on the abandoned property list, then we could start getting aggressive there, because it's deplorable. And another situation, in one of the playgrounds in Parsons, I know we're fixing up the one by the Little League Field, but we have scoundreling, and for the most part, it's in good shape, but the tubes by the sliding boards are very damaged, and I'm afraid somebody's going to get hurt. So if we could send somebody up from the D P W there, even if we don't have the parts to go ahead and replace it, if we could somehow disable it, so nobody could get in there to get hurt. Okay, and that's all I have, just give you. Okay, now it's time for the public comments session for our meeting. What you do is just, when I call your name, step up to the microphone, try to speak loudly so everybody can hear you, and we'll have a timer here of five minutes, you're allowed five minutes. We don't allow a back and forth, so when you're done speaking, if anybody from council chooses to answer your questions, they will do so at that time, but we can't have a rebuttal of an answer that you give. That's all we ask. Okay, number one, Frank Stewart.
John Sahaski, Almaly. First, I, I.
Thank you, thank you so much. But that's another thing, you just have to tell your name and where you're from. You don't have to give an address, just say what city. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
First thing, I'd like to commend Mr. Brown for representing his neighborhood last night at the school board meeting. Appreciate it, that was a passion of mine. First thing we'll start off with, I also have passion for my neighborhood, so I have to come back and ask about $75,000 for Dan Street. If anybody would like to give me an answer, I'd just like to put that out there. Now, I'd like to talk about parks. First thing, the, I was at Spruce Street. One of the issues with it is, you get to the back of that park, and you go walk further up, it's, it's, like, I don't think we should even keep it as a city. I'd like to see if we could cut off the top of that park and try to sell it, because it's a thruway from the old bar, like, all the way through, so like, people could get back there, and drugs, like, I can see that there was evidence of people, like, living there, like, there was a microwave back there, like, you know, I mean, there's just trash string stemmed off back there, some carpeting, bi, bi mattresses, I want to say, if you've seen, like, there's a lot of stuff that could be. But I think that instead of trying to, like, really clean up and maintain that area, we should try to see if we could talk to property owners in that area, and try to sell the back of that back area building, and just cut it off by fencing, and so we don't have to maintain it anymore, because it's, it's very hidden from the street, and a lot of the things that happen back there, and it's very dangerous. If a kid's playing down there, somebody could snatch him right up and just pull him up into the woods. And also like to talk about, I live in the Heights section, and with all the expansion, and I have no problem with what we're doing with Coal Street to make it, but you're turning it into a superhighway, so the kids from the Heights, they're, it's making that a lot harder for them to go from the Heights area to get to the park, especially with, you know, two and three lane, two, three, four lanes of traffic over there on Coal Street. So I was going to ask if there's any way that we could acquire the property that sits on South Grant Street, I believe it's 36 to 60, used to be a former Grant Street school, the school board owns the property. If there's any way that you could, guys could see, acquire that property from the school board, and maybe turn that into a park, so you have another neighborhood park, so the kids don't have to trek either all the way down to Mayflower, which is a long walk, or over to Coal Street, have to venture versus that street. And I would also ask, if it isn't splash cap, like, at Coal Street, and I know there's been issues with that, and just let them know that that is working, and I think that's all I got.
Okay, anybody here to comment?
I'm not overly familiar with the Dana Street project, however, we did vote for the funding, and $75,000 is not brick and mortar money, I believe it's.
It's not going from the city, I know.
Infrastructure, to put things back together, that's either been done, whether it's a piece of curvy sidewalk, those types of things, I believe. Certainly, I want to build a development, something by $1,000, that's what, I'm correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the purpose of that, to kind of restore after the demolition and everything that ever was down there. The Spruce Street Park, I'm not overly familiar with it, and been a little while, and I'd agree with you, when it gets overgrown, those types of areas can cause problems, people hiding there, and what parks can do with it. So hopefully, we can take a look at that, and Coal Street, it is difficult to cross if you're not crossing at the light, the light at the top, the light at Sherman Street, which is, you know, the yearly makes way to cross Coal Street, it's a place that you're going to le, supposedly legally cross Coal Street, I know people do at other locations, but just prefer, people come down to the Sherman Street, crossing across there. I've had, I've acquired a lot of that myself, I understand that that's far to order for that, it's supposed to be, I don't know, very short.
Great, next week.
Mr. Lewis, pardon me, it's been troublesome, I agree with it, it's a, hopefully, it's a very warm weather coming in, so hopefully, we can extract that, and get what we need to have, so hopefully, get some answers.
John, I understand that you and a few other people petitioned to cut the grass at Barry's, so I would take it to that company that, that you were working with. So, what's your thoughts on parcels of properties that, you know, can be bought and sold and so forth? I think that's going to be resolved with this new redevelopment authority situation. We have parcels of property right now that I'd love to see on, you know, on our internet, our website, that people can buy, but what I understand, well, that's not possible now, is that right, Mr. Vinsco, that that will be possible?
For sure.
So maybe if there's a problem next to someone's house, or if there's a bunch of stuff, we can try to start off again, putting it on our website, so this is a very capable site, we're, that's going to be doing. Okay, so hopefully, some of your suggestions, I can't promise one. Keep, keep bringing suggestions, I'd say, that's fine.
Can I just add one more thing? It's not a pending rebuttal, but I'd just like to say, like, when we have the news coming down, is there any way that you could ask for volunteers? Because there's been a ton of people that would have volunteered for that, like, I just don't want to see this, like, I don't want 16 or BRE coming and making us look bad on the news. I can't, like, I'll do something like that again, I won't stand for it, just like, see if the city could just ask for volunteers, because I'm sure there's plenty of people. I have a bunch of people that stopped and helped me, I would have never got that done if other people didn't stop me. Just like, if we have a park like that, just ask for volunteers, I'm sure people would.
The best, the best way for us to get it out, John, is to tell us in the meeting prior to that, and we'll, hopefully, we can tell the newspapers what to put in the paper, hopefully, they'll put that in, and how much space does it take up? The more hands, the easier it works.
Yeah, I just want to protect the cities, and just, I don't want to look bad.
Thanks, thanks for everything you do.
And John, universities, uh, Wilkes, I know Wilkes, I know his authority, they have programs for it.